I hereby call the meeting, special meeting of the Brockton City Council for Monday, December 7th, 2020, 6:00 PM to order. Good evening, everyone. Out of respect to public health and in response to Governor, Governor's declared state of emergency, this meeting will be closed to the public and interested parties can instead access the deliberations via live stream on YouTube. This meeting is being held in accordance with Governor Charlie Baker's signed open meeting law order date, order dated March 12th, 2020, which relieves a public body from the requirement of Section 20 of Chapter 38 that it conduct its meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body for interested members of the public through adequate alternative means. Good evening, everyone. I know that we have made this hearing open to, via Zoom, to the public, so just so everybody knows, we have allowed participants in to the, to the meeting. Before we begin, councilors, we're going to take a roll call vote, just so we, we have a quorum. Counselor Cardoso.
Present.
Counselor Cruz.
Present.
Counselor Ian Aery. Counselor Farwell.
Present.
Counselor Alley.
Present.
Counselor Mendez.
Present.
Counselor Monahan.
Present.
Counselor Nacastro.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Thompson.
Present.
Nine councilors are present. This evening's meeting, councilors, I will be reading the part of the clerk as well as my part. Number one, call of the meeting is accepted and placed on file. Officers' return of notice is accepted and placed on file. At this point, we're going to open the hearing, so ordered that the city council hereby determines the percentages of the local tax levy for FY 2021 in accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 40, Section 56, to be borne by each class of real property as defined in Section 2A of Chapter 59, and personal property. At this time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please come forward and give your name to the clerk. I believe we have Mr. John O'Donnell and actually, for Mr. Clarkson, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the city council and members of the public gathered here tonight. My name is Troy Clarkson and I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the City of Brockton. It's my pleasure to introduce the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, John O'Donnell, and members of the Board of Assessors, Chris Pike and Julie Castor, who are here with us tonight. Julie will speak briefly and provide some background information to you. As I did last year, I'd like to just provide a brief opening statement and provide an overview of the purpose of tonight's meeting and speak to you a little bit about what we're asking you to do here tonight. As it says in the packet that was provided to you and posted several days ago on the city's website, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to establish the proportion of the tax levy raised by the residential and commercial class of property. This hearing is required under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 56. And so I read that from the packet so that we start the meeting off and are clear about what the, what the ask is, what is being requested of the city council. This year, as in all years and in most communities, there's lots of discussion about how the increased property values are impacting the work that we're asking you to do tonight. So as I did at your meeting a couple of weeks ago, I'd like to just speak very briefly on that. The amount of taxes that the City of Brockton can collect in any given year is limited by law, and we call that the levy limit, the maximum amount that we can collect on an annual basis in property taxes. And many, many years ago, back in the early eighties, Proposition 2 and 1/2 was passed and and what that says is every year we can only increase that levy limit by 2 and 1/2%, unless the legislative body, the city council and the voters approve an exclusion from that. And that's usually via an override, which is a permanent increase in the tax levy for a specific amount, or two different ways to fund capital projects. But none of those are on the table tonight. What we're here to do tonight is to simply, within that levy limit, within that legal limit of the amount that we can collect in taxes, to distribute that amount between the residential and the commercial and industrial properties. So we have, for the last several years in Brockton, based on the real estate market, have seen significantly rising real estate values. But it's important to note, I think, for purposes of tonight's discussion, that an increase in property values does not increase the amount of taxes that we collect from properties. Just for clarity's sake, I'll repeat that. An increase in property values does not increase the amount we, the city, can collect in taxes. Again, that amount remains constant. So what we're here to do tonight is to ask you to deliberate and decide what the distribution is of the various classes of property, hence the name of classification hearing. And Julie from the Board of Assessors and John O'Donnell, the chairman, will get into more detail about specifically what that means. But I thought it was important to start off our discussion with that overall 30,000-foot view of, of how the property values are related to the overall taxation. So John and Julie will talk in specific details about what the distribution is. We'll make a recommendation to you, but you have broad authority and flexibility in distributing those rates, excuse me, not the rates, but the classes and how they're affected. Generally, in Brockton, the city council has taken the position to distribute the rate so it's more favorable to residential taxpayers. So to distribute the rate and shift it so that more of the burden falls on commercial and industrial ratepayers. And again, our team will get into that in more detail, but I think that's important to note, too, that the council has historically taken the position that the rate should be distributed so that the burden is less on our residential taxpayers. I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chairman, from, from the council. But unless, if there are no questions, then I would, I would ask to defer to a member of the Board of Assessors, Julie Castor, who will provide some additional information on the specifics in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. Yes, I think the best way to have you do your presentations, then we'll take questions from the public and from the councilors. I'm just going to remind everybody to please, you yourselves, that way we don't hear any background noise when someone is speaking. Thank you. Julie, good evening, Ms. Castor. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. My name is Julie Castor, Assessor for the City of Brockton. I would like to make a brief statement concerning the fiscal year 2021 tax rate classification hearing. First, I would like to thank the entire staff of the Assessors Office for their support and assistance throughout the year. The purpose of this hearing is to establish the proportion of tax levy raised by residential and commercial class of property, also known as the factor. This hearing is required under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 56. The assessed values for fiscal year 2021 represent the estimate of market value as of January 1st, 2020, utilizing verified sales data from calendar year 2019. Assessments represent 100% of market value as required by Massachusetts General Law. The Department of Revenue has certified the real and personal property values for the city, as well as the new growth value. The assessors are required to fairly assess 27,530 parcels in the city. There are 24,245 residential parcels, 1,740 commercial and industrial parcels, and 1,545 personal property accounts. The total taxable value of all real and personal property in the city for fiscal year 2021 is which is an 8.63 increase from fiscal year 2020 and is the highest total taxable value ever for the City of Brockton. This year, the city added a total of $2,331,089 in new growth tax dollars in residential, commercial, and personal property. The residential class total value increased 9.25%. The commercial class total value increased 2.08%. The industrial class total value increased 8.10%. And personal property class total value increased 16.33%. People often associate rising assessments with rising taxes. However, this is not the case. Rising budgets cause rising taxes. If the budget increases, typically taxes increase. The assessed value represents the market value of property. If all assessments went down 25% and the budget increased, taxes would still increase. The purpose of tonight's tax rate classification hearing is to adopt a residential factor. The city council will decide on how much of the tax levy the owners of residential properties will pay and how much of the tax levy the owners of commercial, industrial, and personal property will pay. This decision is what creates two tax, tax rates or a split rate in the City of Brockton. The split tax rate in the City of Brockton taxes commercial, industrial, and personal property at a higher rate than residential properties. If there was no shift, there would be one rate, and based upon this year's levy, the single tax rate for City of Brockton would be $16.94. Last December, the city council voted to set the fiscal year 2020 shift factor at 1.72. This meant that for fiscal year 2020, commercial, industrial, and personal property, while representing 16.57% of the total taxable value, paid 28 and 1/2% of the total taxes. Brockton continues to have the lowest average single-family tax bill of the surrounding towns based upon fiscal year 2020 data. The average single-family bill was $4,410, which was a $206 increase over the fiscal year 2019 average bill. The average tax bill in the city was $1,012 lower than the average bill of the contiguous towns, including Brockton. Thank you all, and I'll now answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Castor. Councilors, do you have any questions for Ms. Castor? I don't see any hands go up from the councilors. Mr. O'Donnell. Ms. Castor, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. I don't have much to add to that. Julie covered the bases pretty well. Just last year, the fact was 172, and the two previous years was 173, so you've been pretty consistent on where you've been shifting the burden. So again, I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. O'Donnell, councilors? I see Counselor Farwell.
Yes, actually, Madam Chair, either Mr. O'Donnell or, or Ms. Castor. Valuations, obviously, are an important part of this equation because the, the the value of someone's house drives the thousand per evaluation amount that we set. And a couple of things have come up after I reviewed the information that was published by the assessors. It was a document called Public Disclosure, and it listed all of the different street addresses and the, the current values and then the proposed values. And so my first question is, is that still a valid document? Has anything changed that would have been published earlier for the public to look at? Julie?
Counselor, there was only one, so during that period of time, taxpayers can dispute their value based on the data, not the value, but based on if we have misinformation. And there was only one, it was a commercial property, they contacted us and we went out and we corrected it, so there was only one property that has been corrected.
All right, here's, I'll give you a couple of examples and, and then just ask for your response because I'm wondering if there isn't some type of a software program that you use with some algorithm that, that sets values. There is, on my street, let's just take my street. I have a house three or four houses down from me. It was built in the year 2000. The, the value of that house went down by $1,500. And I, I just find it amazing that, given what we just talked about, the value of houses going up in Brockton, that how could someone's value from January 1st of one year to January 1st of the other, 1119 to 1120, go down by $1,500? I mean, it's, it's just such an inconsequential amount. It just tells me that I don't think a human being looked at that house and said, gee, something's happened and it's, it's worth less. But let's go to Cottage Grove Avenue, which is over in Ward 3C. There's a house over there that was assessed for $448,900 in fiscal year 20, and now it's assessed at $432,100. And, and again, I, I, I am not saying that the assessors have done anything wrong. I do not know, nor do, nor do I want to know all of the intricacies of how we establish the value of houses. I just want to make sure that when we send out a tax bill to someone, they've got the right value on their house.
Can I answer you?
Yeah, let me just give you one last example, which will be personal. Side by side, I'm one house, my next-door neighbor is the other. I have three bedrooms, one and a half baths. They have six bedrooms, two baths. Same-sized lot, side by side. Their value went up this year by about $6,400 and mine went up $26,000. And I, and I just, and you know what? It may be legit, but you can see how the average person would look at that and say, how could that happen? How could you have two houses on the same-sized lot, built within a year of each other? One goes up $26,000, the other one goes up $6,000, and the one that went up $6,000 is larger. And how could Cottage Grove go down? That's a very, very good residential area, and clearly, the house further down the road on Braymore from me to go down $1,500, John, is just, it, it certainly piques the curiosity as to what type of a software program or how these numbers are driven. So that, that's my commentary, and I'd be glad to.
Let me give, I'll give you a basic answer, and it happens in every community. We don't assess individual homes. We do mass appra, mass assessment. So we assess groups of property that, at a time, and some values go up, some values go down. It happens every year. And we can't go in and pick, say we see 400 properties' values go down. We can't just go in and adjust those values.
But, but, but don't, is, would you get part of your presentation from either the vendor, an anomaly, in other words, the parameters where something would jump out at you and you would say, wait a minute, that doesn't seem right? I, because what, my fear is, what you're telling me is that this is not really a human exercise. It's more of a software exercise, and if mine went up to $26,000 and it's legit, that's fine. I don't want somebody up in Ward 6 or in Ward 2 to have their property go up $26,000, and it's not justified. And I know, I know all about mass appraisals, and I'm sure things go on in other communities, but I'm worried about Brockton, and I'm, and I'm, my concern is that I just want to make sure that when we set the rate, that we have given people the absolute correct value of their house, which will translate into the payment that they owe the city. And, and I, I have to tell you and to my colleagues, the examples that I just gave you make me scratch my head. I do not know how a house in my neighborhood could go down $1,500. And if anybody looked at the list, they would say, wait a minute, that doesn't seem quite right.
It, it happened all over the city.
All over the city?
Yeah, there's values that go down and there's values that go up. That's just part of the process, and that's why we, that's why people can file for abatements. That's why we had the, the period, the eight-day period when people could contest. You know, we're not saying all our data is 100% perfect. That's why we have this, the process that they can go through, but the, the information that we give the state, they certify all that information.
But, but, but they don't, they don't know, they don't know.
They do see, yes, they do see values go up and down.
Oh, of course we do, but $1,500? I mean, is that, is there anyone sitting there that can tell me how a house on Braymore Road could simply go down by $1,500? What would be the logical reason for that? Using mass appraisal or any other software program? What, what could possibly drive an insignificant number like that to be attached to a house in my neighborhood?
It's a, it's a tech, technical question I can't answer.
All right, well, I thank you. I won't take up any more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cardoso.
I thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. O'Donnell, thank you for being here and for answering some of these questions that I had for you last time. And this is to Counselor Farrell's point. This is exactly why we need to have more clear answers to these things because people are wondering what's going on in this city, and we need more transparency. We can't, you know, say that we don't know, we don't have answers to that. We need clear answers to why some values are going up and some are going down and what's going on. People want to know. And that's why my questions were around the accuracy of data cards last time for you and an internal audit of this process. And so I'm still very interested in answers to those questions. And I'm sure a lot of folks on this call are, are interested, so. That's just, that's all I have. I'm sure there, once we get the public comments going, you'll hear a lot of this because this is what people want to know.
All set, councilors?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, Donald, do you want to? You said you have a question. You were just making questions for the assessors or Mr. Clarkson? I don't see any hands up. So now we're going to continue with the hearing. We have people from the general public. Is there anyone else here in favor that would like to speak on this matter? In favor and opposition? I'm going, going to open it up to the public. I believe Mr. Braithwaite, Jamal Braithwaite, I, did you have your, would you like to, do you have a question on this matter? Or comment?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I have some questions.
Shirley, if everyone's speaking, can please give their, their name, their full name and their, their address for the, for the record, please.
Yes, please state your full name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jamal Braithwaite. My address is 18 Parkview Lane. And my question is for John O'Donnell. Uh, John, as, first of all, thank you so much for providing all that supporting information to the council prior to your previous presentation on November 23rd. For, now, I appreciate in your communications, you've always said that the DOR certifies the data. But I also note that on November 23rd, you said that the DOR, this is the, the Division of, of Local Services does not look at the property card. So it's my understanding, but correct me if I'm wrong, from your explanation, the DOR, the Division Labor, uh, Local Service, does not look at the property card, and that's where the tax assessment data exists. So if they're not looking at the property card, who validates the accuracy of the tax assessment values published on the property card?
I have an answer to that. The assessed values are audited every year by the Division of Local Services, which is the section of DOR. However, during the month of July, the summer, as part of the five-year certification, we had Steve McCarthy from the Department of Revenue, and he conducted a review of property cards. He actually performed a drive-by on inspection of 100 single-family homes, 15 condos, 15 two-family homes, 10 three-family homes, and 16 apartment buildings to verify the accuracy of the data that we had on property cards.
Mr. Braithwaite, you're muted, I believe, or? We can't hear you. You need to unmute, Jamal.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
My, my deepest apologies. I'm so sorry. Julie, I actually missed what you said. My phone cut out while you were talking. You, you see, now, I believe what, what I did here is you said the DOR does certification of all the data. I think that's what you said?
I'll just repeat my answer. So what I was saying was that the assessed values are audited every year by the Division of Local Services, which is a part of the section of the DOR. And during this, during the month of July, this summer, as part of our five-year certification, Steve McCarthy from the Department of Revenue conducted a review of property cards. Part of that, he performed a drive-by on the inspection of 100 single-family homes, 15, 15 condos, 15 two-family homes, 10 three-family homes, and 16 apartment buildings to verify the accuracy of the data that we have on the property cards.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you, thank you for explaining that, Julie. Now, further, now, within the Tax Assessment Office and underneath their general process, who conducts the review over data changes? So for example, does John, as the assessor, does he conduct a review over data changes? Specifically, he's conducting a review to identify data accuracy and completeness. But does, does he do a review of it, or do you guys just solely rely on the auditor or from the DOR, from the DOR's review?
Hello, Jamal, it's John O'Donnell. The board checks the data and also the Department of Revenue checks the changes that are made.
Okay, so when they check the data, can you walk me through, so like, when they check the data, do they run a data change log? What's the name of the report they review? Can you walk us through the review process?
No, there's no report. I answered these questions two weeks ago. There's no report that we have.
So how do you know, if you wanted to generate a population of all data changes, how would you do that?
If we did that, it, the report would take over a week to populate. We make changes, we make address changes, we make ownership changes, we make a variety of changes, and they cannot just do data changes.
So as the assessor, how do you gain reassurance or assurance on the, on, on that, 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 that the data changes made were accurate?
This is why we have an appeal period. People can appeal their assessments. It's, it's up to the homeowners to look at their assessed values, to look at their property record cards. They're all on the GIS website. They've been there since October 28th. So they need to look at it also.
Okay, so.
We have 27,000 parcels. We, so I'm not going to say there's not errors on some, but people need to look at them. That's how we, and then we'll come out and inspect the property. You know, when people pull building permits, we go out and inspect the property. That's where we get the data from.
So now.
If people don't pull a building permit, then we, we don't have the data.
Got it. So now, when, now, in absence of the existence of a data change log to review, how do you know that the data wasn't changed by someone who's unauthorized to change the data?
There's only four people of authorization in the office to make data changes.
Is, is that like an ITGC? Is that IT, General Control, over the data?
No, it's, it's controlled by our software. They're not, people don't have access to all the different fields.
Now, moving forward, let's see here. So now you, I want to understand if there was ever, if you've ever identified an error on a property card. Now, I noticed that you said that there was one example. Can you just, i- is that it for the year? Was there just one mistake identified, or were there any others?
No, there was only one property owner that notified us with errors on their property data card.
So if a property owner does not identify that there's an error on the property card, then that means that we just assume the data is correct?
Yes.
Well, on that note, is there, is there any objections to having the city auditor conduct their own review on the 2020 assessment?
Troy, can you?
Yeah, I can answer that. So the, the role of the city auditor, generally, in my experience, and I've worked in several different communities, does not encompass any sort of oversight of the Board of Assessors and the work that they do. That's why the Department of Revenue has a process where they review and, and audit that data. So separation of duties and municipal finance is something that's critically important. And, and so I'm happy to, Jamal, have a discussion with you about that. But generally, in my experience, the general laws are not constructed to provide that sort of oversight to an auditor.
So, so I noticed that we put a lot of reliance on the DOR certification. When the DOR provides that certification, do they provide a report?
And I know this is a public hearing, but this is a public hearing for the public to speak, whether they're in favor or in opposition to the, during the hearing, it's really, I know that our CFO and our assessors have answered a lot of the questions at previous hearings. So I will limit this to statements of, you know, whether you're in favor or in opposition.
So overall, overall, at the moment, from what my, my statement is, I'm in opposition of this tax rate increase. And the reason why I'm in opposition is because I just, it sounds like the city of Brockton does from, it sounds like from the tax assessors' own dimension, they don't conduct a review over the quality of the data changes on the tax assessment. So there's a scenario risk that property, I appreciate we're trying to raise a hundred fifty-five million dollars, but there's a scenario risk that it's being paid for disproportionately in absence of having adequate internal controls over the tax assessment process.
Are you all set, Mr. Braithwaite?
And so just my last ask is that if the, if the city council does vote to approve the tax rate increase, I ask that they also vote or make a motion to add the tax assessment process for 2020? If they can make a motion to recommend that it be added to the 2021 internal audit plan?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I don't, the best way for the public to get our attention, to be able to speak in favor or in opposition to this matter this evening, is to use the raise your hand feature. I, I see that a few of you are making comments in the chat room, but I think I'm going, but the best way is to raise your hand. I have L. Lynch that's asking, saying that they have a question. But once again, I'm going to state that this is a hearing for residents to speak in favor or in opposition. Ms. Lynch, I'm not, or Mr., I'm, it just says L. Lynch.
It's Linda Lynch. I live at thirty-one Chestnut Drive. Hi.
Hi, how, how are you? Please, thank you for stating your name and your address. You have a statement?
Um, yeah, naively, I was unaware of this document until Wynne just mentioned it. I've lived in the city most of my life, certainly with my husband for the last thirty-five years. So I just did a quick scan of our neighborhood. And curiously, the first six houses are plus fourteen, plus two, plus fourteen, plus two, plus fourteen, plus two, in that order. I mean, that seems to be very random. There's another plus fourteen or plus twelve. But then there's, there's a poor neighbor who's got a twenty-four percent, which I, I understand, it's up to them to, to look. But I guess my question is, did, I mean, I don't understand such a, such a pattern. We've only, we only have thirteen houses. But the pattern is very close throughout the neighborhood. It's almost like every other one. And, and those houses are all alike, you know, up to the point. They're all, well, very similar in style. But I mean, I mean, I'm opposed to this. We are opposed to this, to an increase. We understand that things are changing, but I don't understand this type of an analysis based on the actual explanation given. It's random, but there's no valid, you know, facts that you can give to us as to how, you know, two houses sitting next to each other. Wynne seemed to have a fifteen hundred dollar increase in, in his neighborhood. But when I'm looking, you know, we've got a definite pattern here of about an eleven thousand dollar increase for six folks who are all clustered near each other. So in that regard, I have to express my opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. In the, I also have, I believe it's Mr. Higgins. Did you have a, did you want to make a statement to Higgins? I know you were in the chat room, but. No? Okay. I have Ms. Liz, Liz Lasso. You had your hand up. Please, uh, come forward and state your name and address to the clerk, please.
My name is Elizabeth Lasso and I live at ninety-nine Armiston Street.
Did you just?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I agree with everything that Jamal has said. And I agree with what the last person on here said, that it only seems incorrect and not random. It seems that whomever is doing this is not assessing appropriately. And that's not right. I'm completely against any kind of tax increase whatsoever on the citizens of this city, especially during this kind of time. And especially because of the fact that it seems that the property values have been grossly reported. And it does not seem appropriate to move forward with any kind of tax increase until the city can figure out the appropriate tax rate that each home is being assessed at for their value. I know mine is grossly wrong. I have assessed with my other neighbors who live in my neighborhood. I have a neighbor who spent a lot of money to update their home and their tax increase went up a certain percentage, while mine went up by a huge percentage. While meanwhile, I have a property that's falling apart because I get flooded from the streets of Brockton, who ruined my property with them not redoing my streets appropriately. I've had other property, uh, other street damage done by construction trucks that shouldn't have been driving on my, on the street in the first place. And so my property's falling apart, yet I had one of the highest tax rate increases, meaning the highest property value increase on my street. How was that appropriate? Anyone? Anyone have an answer? Anyone have a plan on how they're going to get this right? No?
Is that your comment?
I'm against it then. I guess we'll just end it with that.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone else here in favor or in opposition that would like to speak on this matter? I just have Ellie. Please take, come, please state your full name to the, name and address to the clerk, please.
Okay, Elise Angela Texara. I live at fifty-four Henry Street. Um, I'm in Ward Five. Um, so just piggybacking.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but please mute your microphones. We're picking up a lot of background music, noise. And it, it, we can't hear the people that are speaking. Thank you.
You know what? It's, let me move. It's probably me because my mom is on the phone. Is that better?
Uh, we can hear you, yes.
Okay, so yeah, it was probably me. So just real quick, I just want to piggyback on what everybody is saying about this being the wrong time to increase any type of increase. I mean, the water bill itself was enough, and now we're talking about tax increase, you know? And we have a lot of people in this community that are on fixed income, you know, that now have to choose between paying this or paying that, selling their homes or not selling their homes, you know? And it's just, it's not fair to do this during a pandemic unless you guys know when this pandemic is going to end and how it's going to end and how everybody's going to be affected by it. But given that we don't know that, to increase any type of increase at all is ridiculous. Everything is already going up. Groceries is up, electric, gas, and now property tax. And it's unfair because we don't understand how it's being increased and by how much and why. So unless there's a proper plan that everybody understands why it's happening, it does not need to happen right now. Like, we need to take in consideration our people that live in Brockton, the struggle that they're having, and think of better ways to use the funds that are coming our ways instead of putting it back on us. Like, we shouldn't be responsible for all these increases that are happening. So I'm completely against it, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, we're going to move on with anyone that's here in favor and opposition. I have Abby and Martha. Just hands up.
Hi, my name is Martha Forrester. I live at seventy-one Rockland Street here in Brockton. I have to say I am deeply opposed to the increase. I have done nothing to my property. I have no money to do anything to my property right now. And yet my value keeps increasing. I've had you out twice now to reassess my evaluation. I will do it a third time if I have to. But I have to think in this time, you've increased my water bill. I see opposition for movement on properties. I see properties being built that are condos, market rate. Who wants to live here? Nobody. You raised my water bill. You did nothing with it. Actually, that line item was actually moved to something else. I want my property value to stay as it was. I've done nothing. Others who've done more increase to their work. Either side of me have increased their values drastically. Their value went down. So I'm in opposition.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition on this matter? Please raise your hand. Is there no way to read what's going on in the chat? Because I think a lot of people have some valid questions and concerns on the chat. Sorry, Ellie, I'm sorry. Yes, but I, I mean, that's, the chat isn't, this isn't a question and answer type of thing. This is a public hearing for the, for the public to really speak in favor and opposition. So I'm not, I can't, I know that there's people making comments in the chat room, but I can't go in there and, and make those. I can't, I mean, I can't answer those questions in the chat room. But if somebody would like to speak, and I see, State Rep Dubois has her hand raised. State Rep Dubois, please state your name and address to the clerk.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle Dubois. I live at Sixth Bank Street, Brockton, Mass. I was on the city council for ten years, and I appreciate all your hard work to each and every member here, as well as City Council President Shirley Azak. I think you're doing a good job tonight. And thank you so much for all your hard, dedicated work for the city. I am making a comment tonight in opposition to a property tax increase. Of course, as people's values of their homes increase, the bill will go up, even if the tax per thousand of value stays the same. I'm specifically commenting in opposition of either moving some of the total levy toward the single-family and multifamily homeowners and specifically commenting in opposition to any increase in taxation per thousand dollar of a value. So whatever it was for this tax cycle, I think it should be for next tax cycle. And that is my comment for this evening, and I appreciate you and all the work that you all do. Thank you, as well as the residents.
Thank you, State Rep Dubois. I don't see any other hands up. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Ms. Louise Connor, please state your name and address to the clerk.
My name is Louise Connor. I live at twenty-four Dupont Circle in Brockton. And I just found out about this, but I discovered that my property value is going up thirty-eight thousand dollars. I totally disagree with that. My house is a hundred years old and it needs a ton of work. But the rest of my neighbors, it's just all over the place. It's five thousand, ten thousand. And I discovered that my house is listed as a four-bedroom when it's a three-bedroom, and so I'm not quite sure why that's the case, but I've been here thirty years and it's always been a three-bedroom, so. I obviously totally disagree with taxes going up, and I'd kind of like to understand how my house is worth thirty-eight thousand dollars more than it was last year.
Just to help, Ms. Connor, our assessors have stated in the past that there is an abatement period, so you can abate the taxes. So if you don't believe the information is correct, that is something that you can, you know, that you, you can do. So if you want more information on that, I would suggest you contact the assessor's office.
Okay.
Are you all set? Are you all done with your comment?
Thank you.
I have Ida Speller. Please state your name and address to the clerk, please.
My name is Ida Speller. I live at twenty-five Charlene Drive, Charlene Drive in Brockton. For the past forty-two years I've been living here, my road has never been paved, always patched. I don't understand why taxes are going up. We haven't done anything significant. So I, for one, am against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Speller. Anyone else? John? You, I just, it just says John, so, John, please come forward, state your name and address to the clerk.
Uh, yeah, John Barrows, one oh three South Lady Street, Brockton. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm against it. Are you guys doing this based on the recent sales? Because I see towards Brockton's law, just to re-
I'm, I didn't hear your question, sir. I don't know if anybody else did. We seem to have lost you, Sparrows. Are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes. What was your statement? I, we didn't.
Yeah, I'm in opposition to it. I was wondering if they're doing the increases based on what's going on in the, in the trends of the market. There's, obviously, people are moving to Brockton. There's a lot of sales in Brockton and some of these, you know, multifamilies are going for a lot more. Mine's a one-family. But I'm wondering why they're doing the increase now? Is it because?
Sure, so it's what we do every year, and this is just for clarification. Every year, the city council sets this tax factor, which it, it's not, you know, I think you're calling it increases, but it's, we're setting the tax factor. This is done every year. We're required to do it by the Department of Revenue. And, you know, I'm not sure what part of the meeting you logged on at, but there was a lot of information that was given at the beginning of this meeting. Are you there?
Uh, yeah, I understand that. I was here for the beginning of the meeting.
Sure, so I mean, I'm sure those questions were.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, because I purchased my house in two thousand and six and I was paying twenty-seven hundred dollars a year, and now it's up to forty-four hundred. So, I mean, obviously, they go up every year. So they changed the tax rate. Obviously, it used to be higher, it used to be like fifteen dollars. Now it's less. But what they're doing is increasing the property value, which in turn, that's how they actually get more money out of you.
And that, this evening, is where we set the tax factor that will, that will be for the next, so we were able to send out the, the tax bills. I'm sorry, I seem to be either losing you or my internet's bad, but are you there?
Yeah, I'm there.
Mr. Barrows, okay.
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter in favor or in opposition? If so, please raise your hand. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
If I could unmute L. Lynch, they're having a difficulty with the raise hand option.
Oh, okay, sure.
That person an opportunity.
Okay, yes, I don't see that. So please.
Um, L. Lynch, you're unmuted if you'd like to make a comment.
I did comment. Thank you very much. I, I do, I don't have the option to raise hand, but I did speak, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I do apologize, everybody. Bear with us. I would just like to make a quick comment. I know this meeting was supposed to be live. It was supposed to take place on this past Wednesday evening, December second. But due to health reasons, we were, we needed to postpone this meeting to this evening, and it needed to be via Zoom because City Hall is close to the public. So I just want to make sure that I clarified that with everybody. You know, so I appreciate everybody's patience. Technology is wonderful, but it's. Technology is wonderful, but it's, you know, this would be a little veteran person. But bear with us. We will get through it. And I just want everybody to know that we're always here, whether it's our department heads or the city council. We're here to answer your questions, to work with you. This is a public hearing that is held every year for the purposes of setting the tax factor. So I don't see any other, I don't see any other people, anybody else. I'm just, I'm going to be a little patient. Ms. Nancy DiMascio Fernandez, you have your hand raised. Are you, please state your name and address to the clerk. Can you hear us, Mr. DiMascio?
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address to the clerk.
Nancy DiMascio Fernandez, 305 Quincy Street, Brockton, Mass. I'm just putting my two cents in. I'm against the, I'm in opposition against the tax rate, especially during these times. In good conscience, you guys went and raised our water rates. Now you want to raise taxes. I don't think it's a good idea, especially now.
Are you all set, Ms. DiMascio?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that's here in favor or in opposition that would like to speak on this matter? Nope, seeing none. I'm going to close this portion of the hearing. The public hearing is now closed to the, the open meetings closed to the public. And councilors, at this time, will take written and oral arguments. Counselors? Counselor Farwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry I was muted. Colleagues, I don't think there's ever been a time when the residents needed our help more than now. Taxes are going to go up. I mean, they're going to go up. The amount that we raise and appropriate goes up 2.5% every year, and obviously, you have to collect the revenue to cover that. And I might add, only a small portion of what our budget is comes from our property taxes collected. I think we collected about 155 million, and our budget is over 400 million. So we are very heavily dependent upon fees and state aid and Chapter 70 school aid. Last year, we adjusted the rate, and we favored slightly the businesses. I think we have to go in the other direction. I think we have to give as much assistance to our residents as we can. Now, I'm prepared for someone to say, well, you know, what's a couple of hundred dollars? I heard someone say to me the other day, and it really stuck with me. A couple of hundred dollars is 200-
Lynn, you're muted.
Can I hear you?
I just hit unmute. Are we better now?
Yeah.
I just think we have to go to the maximum and help our residents. It's as simple as that. I don't think I need to say anymore. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam President. So I think it's important to note that we are not voting to increase taxes this evening. We are voting on how to allocate or shift the tax burden between our resident, our commercial, and our industrial properties. Now, this is not a part of the job that any one of us enjoys. I'm a taxpayer as well. But I do recommend that all residents review what tax abatements are available on our city website and apply for any that you qualify for. Now, as our CFO has stated in the past, has stated that in the past, this council, its usual practice is to shift the tax burden from the residents to our commercial and our industrial properties. As Counselor Farwell just stated, last year, the previous council decided to provide our commercial and our industrial businesses some relief from that usual burden shift. So I also concur with Counselor Farwell that this year, given circumstances of the pandemic and our request for increased water and sewer fees, that is my recommendation that this council provide our residents relief and accept the 175 shift percentage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Was that-
Counselor.
Yes, Counselor. Yes.
Thank you.
I do have a few counselors. Is this regarding what Counselor Thompson? I do have a few counselors that have their hands up. Is this a-
I haven't heard a motion yet.
That's what I mean. It wasn't in the form of a motion.
I haven't heard a motion. I have the floor now, I believe.
Well, I have- I'm not sure who's speaking. Who's speaking? Who said point of order?
Yeah, that was me, Madam President.
Yes.
So I guess I wanted, if we're all going to make comments, and then at the end of that, start making motions so that everybody could be heard prior to us voting on specific classification shifts.
Sure, yes, I have some counselors that have their hands up. So Counselor Cruz, I know there's a few counselors that have had their hands up. Did you have anything regarding Counselor Thompson's comment? Or is it, do you have-
I want to make my own comments.
Oh, okay, there's Counselor. I have a couple of counselors before you. Counselor Mendez?
Yes, hi. So this is a very important meeting because I believe it clarifies a lot of things to our residents and also to our sponsors. And what I really would like to stress, and I think it hasn't been spoken tonight, when I was at a meeting with our CFO and also with Mr. O'Donnell, I specifically asked the questions, our surrounding towns, why their tax rates are so much higher. And I specifically said, especially if the towns, if they're building new schools, then they really put that burden on the residents. And what Mr. Troy Clarkson explained was the fact that there is even a way, because we are limited by law with 2.5%, but some of these towns, they can go back to the resident and increase it even further in order for them to be able to build the schools and things like that. And in the city of Brockton, we've been talking so much regarding the public safety complex. So I did ask that question. Is that going to be something that we're going to be bringing into the voters to do the same? And what was explained to me is that, no, in Brockton, we don't do that. We keep it within our limit, and we only use it for what we have. So we don't give the residents any burden if we want to do the public safety complex. We want to do the new high school and run and do these things. So I understand that is a big burden, but we're looking to decrease the tax rate. And I agree, once we start doing the motions, to give the biggest relief as possible to our residents and our homeowners, because I do think that, especially now in COVID, it's much needed. But I do think it's important that, once we look in Brockton, how much we have here in this city in comparison to the towns that doesn't even have their own hospital. They share, it's Abington and Brockland, they share their own water. They're so much less involved in the city of Brockton, and their tax rates fall so much higher. So we're going to be looking to decrease it today to as much as possible legally allowed to the 175, and that is what I'm going to be looking to do as well, once we have a motion on the floor. But, guys.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mendez, I'm not sure who's speaking, but Counselor Castro, you're next.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. This has been a terrific hearing. I just want to remind everyone very quickly, and this is more, of course, for our viewing audience than for my colleagues and you. The budget is proposed by the mayor, and we set our budgets in the spring. We set it in June. And Mayor Sullivan reduced his budget by $373,000 from what was proposed the prior year, and we accepted and voted in a budget that was very close to the amount he proposed. We must raise sufficient funds to cover the budget. That's our job tonight, and we're looking at a shift. And I just wanted to, one aside, we're not, we're having a hearing live. We're not dealing with the chat room. I did see, however, when I took a glimpse at the chat room, someone mentioned, well, why don't we use CARES Act funds to provide additional revenue for the city to operate on? That's not what CARES Act funds are for. They're only to reimburse unexpected expenses directly related to the pandemic. So I'm sorry, that sounds interesting, but that's not an avenue we can go down. I feel very strongly that during a pandemic with so many people not working and hurting, I must support the largest shift, which is 175. And that's what I will be doing this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lally?
Thank you, Madam President. I had originally intended to raise my hand and then make or second the motion for a move to 175. I think it's really what we have to do. We did favor the businesses slightly last year when we did this. And again, I know other counselors have said it, but the mayor, in the introduction of his budget, produces a, you know, basically a tax increase. And then, when the budget is voted on and passed by the council, we have agreed to raise the taxes. And so I think the public hearings at the budget, in front of the budget, I think really are very essential. And I think what we need to do is sort of increase the attendance in them as well, because that's where a lot of the, you know, a lot of the tax questions will come up, too. This is not an easy year. It's not a fun year. It's not, it's not good. But this is, this is what we have to do. Raising, you know, raising it as much as we can to benefit the residents, so putting it up to full 0.03. And I know Counselor Thompson originally brought it up, and Counselor Farwell called for it as well. Whatever motion comes out of this.
Sorry, Counselor Cruz and Counselor Cardo. So you had your hands up? So Counselor Cruz, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is difficult times, and this is a difficult, and every year, it's the most difficult meeting we have. For, in large part, because it's not understood even by most of my colleagues most years. The tax burden went up the day we passed the budget. Tonight is not about, and so many, so much of the public, I understand their questions are not, their comments are not in favor of a tax increase. Nobody is, by the way. But that's not what we're doing tonight. That has already been done. That was done back at the end of June. When we approved the budget, we approved the increase in taxes. What we're looking at tonight is what's called a factor. And unfortunately, people tend to look at it as a competition between businesses and homeowners. It's not. As it is, and in fact, the information is in here from Mr. O'Donnell's packet, the businesses account for approximately 15% of the taxable property in this city. By putting the factor where we put it, the businesses pay about triple that, I believe it is. My numbers could be awesome. Again, this package is pretty thick. But already pay most of the, pay much of the, much more than they use in services from the city. But the reason I don't support going to 175 is not that. People tend to think businesses are deep-pocketed monsters that can come up with anything. Most of the businesses in this city are mom-and-pop businesses. When we change that factor, and in fact, we had many of those businesses in front of us about a month ago that Counselor Cardoso brought in, and they talked about the fact that they are teetering right now on whether they're going to stay in business or not, particularly restaurants, liquor stores, small businesses like that. If we increase this factor, we may, we may push some of those people over the edge. And don't forget, those people employ our citizens. These are not mostly people that have, that are just self-employed. These are people who run businesses with eight, 10, maybe 20, maybe 30 employees. If we push some of those employees out of, some of those businesses out of business, those homeowners now are out of jobs. And then we're stuck, the tax factor won't matter. They'll be out of jobs and unable to pay their tax bills. So I can't, I can't support going to 175. I would support going back to 173. But let's not, let's not just kowtow, I'm sorry, not kowtow. Let's not pander and make this an easy decision. It's a difficult decision. And by going to 175, we leave ourselves, first of all, no relief, because the public may not know this, but 175 is the maximum that we can go to. It leaves us nowhere to go in the future if we do need even more. And the other part was, one of the homeowners had said, who wants to live here? Well, the reason the rates are, the evaluations are going up is because Brockton is a tremendously attractive place to live right now. The houses are selling for very, very high numbers. The market is so hot, it's scalding. And that's why those numbers go up. But that's not what you need to look at. Don't look at the tax rate. Look at your tax bill. Because the rate is backed into, and these numbers are backed into by what we're raising tonight. So I won't be able to support 175. I would be able to support 173. And please, keep, keep an open mind on what those businesses are. Those businesses are the same people we're talking about, trying to keep their homes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cardoso?
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank everyone who participated tonight, all of the residents that came out. And I'm really, really concerned about these property tax evaluations. I'm hearing from folks that people need to pay attention to their property cards and that they need to file for abatements and all of that. I want everybody to keep in mind that we have a large community of folks that do not. I mean, I don't understand this, and I'm a registered nurse, you know, and I have a degree, much less our residents that don't speak English and don't know how to navigate the system. And trust me, I get complaints from many of them that do go to City Hall for help, and they're not treated fairly. So I just want, I just want folks at home and people on this call to understand that is not as easy as we think it is. We have about 40 people who participated tonight, and these are English-speaking savvy people, great people. But we have a lot more homeowners that don't understand, don't speak English, and don't know how to apply for abatements and don't know how to navigate the system. And those are the folks that are hurting. And yes, to Counselor Cruz's point, we do have businesses that are hurting, but we also have funding that we're sitting on that could help those businesses that we're not giving out. So we have a lot more homeowners that are suffering in the city and need some help. We've already increased their water bill. I voted no for that tonight. Since this conflicting information about what we're voting on here, I want to understand what my vote means. And the only vote I have tonight is no increase on property taxes, not even a dime for any resident in this city. So when I make my vote, that's all I want to know. What am I voting on? Because I will not increase anything for anyone during a pandemic. Thank you very much, and thank you for everyone who participated.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors, anybody else? I just, I know a few people in the public had their hand up or had made comments. The public hearing part has closed. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. I did close the public hearing part. Is there any counselors that have not made a statement or asked any questions before we do a second round?
Madam Chairman, can you hear me? Counselor in here?
Yes, Counselor, you're near. You have the floor.
I have been, I have been present since the beginning of, there was, if you didn't hear me. So I have been listening. And I'm going to say a couple of quick things, but I do ditto an awful lot of what my colleague from Ward 1 has mentioned. I guess that's the experience that we've had over these years of setting. This is my 17th or 18th, I think, go around, 17th, go around with the setting the tax rate, you know, based upon, you know, the figure that we have to use, and not so much setting a tax rate. But in any case- But in any case, it's not the easiest thing for us to do. But he did mention, and keep this in mind, that no matter what happens, when the next budget is prepared, that means the mayor still has to use the full 2.15% to make everything work. Your tax will go up again. Let's go back a few years. We had a mayor, God rest his soul, that came in and said, I will not raise your taxes. And we went one year, when he prepared the budget. Then he found out, when he was preparing his second budget, what Mr. Cardin said would happen is you have to go to the full 2.15%. We're missing the vote here, and I thank everybody for speaking in regards to this issue, but this city is still under 2.5%. We have been since 1981. And that's what's really hurt this city, is the fact that we are still under 2.5% going on 30 some odd years. And that's what, that's what's made it very difficult over these years. But setting, what we try to do is to set it the best way we can and do the best thing we can to give, you know, the best figure that we can for the residents to have, you know, an easy piece of, you know, trying to pay their tax. And I understand how that works as well, but still, I just, I just want to keep in mind that, you know, what we're trying to do here, and Counselor Cruz is right, I mean, you know, a lot of businesses here, a lot of people live there, and totally, totally correct, if anyone paid attention this summer, and I was paying attention this summer because, because of reason why. You sold over 200, 250 homes sold in this city, and brought in a whole new thrust of new people coming into this city, because they want to come to Brockton. They see Brockton in a different light than, than some people may see it, or maybe how we see it. But still, we've got a long way to go, and I just feel that if we go with the 175, we could be hurting ourselves in the end, and I would also be looking at the 173 factor as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Monahan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to tell you, Counselor Ianieri is right. And I understand what Counselor Cardoso was saying also. It's a very tough decision to make. And I think, again, we cannot say we're not raising taxes, because the taxes were raised when we passed the budget this past summer. So no matter what anybody says, the taxes have been raised. It's a factor of who, how we pay for them, and that's the, that's the whole ball of wax here. And when we talk about splitting it in commercial and residential, like Counselor Cruz said, especially in Ward Two, I have a lot of small mom and pop stores. Those people are going to be hurting, and like he said, people could be out of jobs, what have you. So even 175, I split the difference and say 174 tops, but we have to keep those small mom and pop stores, keep them in business. They do, they hire Brockton residents. They have to keep their jobs. So it's, it's a, it's a tough balancing act, but we've got to do what's best for everybody. And I think a lot of people don't realize that, when you're paying that tax levy, the more commercial we have that come into the city and pay taxes, the less the residents have to pay. So they pay more of that total tax levy, the more businesses we have in here, we have to be attracted to business. I know this is a tough year, but I'm not going to go once, I don't think I can go the 175, maybe 174 is probably what I'm going to go by, and even that's a little high, but still, we have to, like, do what's best for everybody and keep people in business, and that includes the residents who work in this city. So thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Have all the counselors made statements. I know Counselor Farwell, you have your hand up. Do you have a motion, or are you going to?
No, I, what, Counselor Thompson or someone else make a motion. I just want to comment on how I respect Counselor Cruz, Counselor Ianieri, and Counselor Monahan's comments. But we have done a lot for business in this city. Almost every project that's come in, and some that are pending, they get tax increment financing, they get tax increment exemptions. I mean, we, this city has been very business-friendly. This is a unique situation. We have people that have to make a decision between food, clothing for their kids, take the pet to a vet, they don't have the money. And if we take away all the money from the people who live here, and they have no expendable income, they're not going to go to the businesses anyway. So I do hear the plea for moderation, but I think if ever there were a reason to go to 175 and grant relief, it is this year. It's unfortunate, but it's reality, and we've got to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I, okay, Counselor Mendez?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to shift the burden from the 172% to the 175%.
Second.
A motion's been made and properly seconded. Attorney Resnick, will you do the roll call, please?
On the motion?
Counselor Cardoso?
On the motion, I'd like to ask if this 175 lowers taxes for the residents?
Yes.
Do you want Mr. Clarkson to answer? How about we have Mr. Clarkson answer that, Counselor Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Clarkson, can you answer that, please, for?
Yes, happy to answer that. The answer is no. And I would reiterate what Counselor Cruz said earlier. The raising of taxes is determined by the budget that you passed. There is no scenario in which you can not raise taxes based on the vote you're taking tonight. However, the motion that has been made with this burden, it will be the most advantageous for the residents. And so based on, in the packet that was provided to you, and these are estimates based on averages, but if you shift to 175, the average tax bill, residential, single family, will go up by approximately $70.
Does that answer your question, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. Counselor Thompson, you have your, is this on the motion, or does this, do you have, is it on the motion? I see your hand up, but.
Yeah, well, I raised my hand prior to the motion being made, but sure, on the motion, it's 175, from my understanding, will provide businesses with some tax relief, from my understanding, that they would be looking at a, some relief from their taxes. It wouldn't be as high relief as 172 or 173, but there would be some relief for their taxes at 175. So I just wanted to make that clear as well. And I will be voting for 175 when it comes to my turn.
Thank you, Counselor. Attorney Resnick, roll call vote, please.
ASAC?
Yes.
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Ianieri?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
No, sorry.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Is Counselor Rodriguez here?
I haven't seen him, or he wasn't.
Thompson.
Yes.
Did you get Counselor Ianieri, Attorney Resnick?
I did. That's seven in favor of 1.175 and three in opposition.
I move reconsideration in the hope it does not prevail.
Second.
A motion's been made and properly seconded for reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsideration, please?
I have to take a roll call vote.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please.
ASAC?
No.
Cruz?
You skipped me.
Oh, sorry, Cardozo?
No.
Cruz?
You're muted, Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
No.
Mendez?
No.
Monahan?
No.
Nacastro?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Two in favor, eight in opposition, reconsideration fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we need to take a recess, correct?
Yes, one, one quick recess, and she'll be back in three minutes.
Okay. Taking a few-minute recess. Returning from recess, Attorney Resnick?
Yep, so for everyone's just knowledge, I'm going to be reading the order, which will reflect the 175 tax clarification adjustment, and I'll be reading what that shift looks like, and the total at the end totals 100. Order that the city council hereby determines the percentages of the local tax levy in accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 40, Section 56, to be borne by each class of real property as defined in Section 2A of Chapter 59 in personal property. Residential, 71.8507. Industrial, 3.5201. Personal property, 5.7902. The factor for such clarification shall be 175%.
Thank you, Attorney Resnick.
Somebody needs to move that.
So yes, we need to take a motion to approve that order. If we're in favor of the 175, someone would make that motion.
Motion.
A motion was made and properly seconded. All those in favor, Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Ianieri?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That's 10 in the affirmative, two in opposition, the order carries.
The order is adopted.
I move reconsideration in the hope it does not prevail, those percentages.
Second.
A motion's been made and properly seconded for reconsideration. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
No.
Cardozo?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
No.
Mendez?
No.
Monahan?
No.
Nacastro?
No.
Thompson?
No.
That's two in favor of reconsideration, eight in opposition, reconsideration fails.
Counselors, that concludes our special meeting this evening. At this time, we're going to adjourn. Just to let everybody know that's on here for the public hearing, the second part of our, actually, our finance meeting, which was scheduled for 7:00 PM, which is starting a little late, is not open for public comment. So if you want to continue and follow this meeting, you will need to go on either the Brockton Cable Access Live channel or via YouTube Live. So at this time, whoever is just viewing this in the public, you will not be admitted, readmitted into the room. So thank you, and at this time, this meeting's adjourned.